Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday the seventeenth. It is six P M. And it's time for our regular council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Brandsetter?
Here.
Councilmember Lauracella?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson is not yet in attendance. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
Mayor Whalen is not yet in attendance. You have a forum?
At this time, if you will please stand with me and for a moment of silence, we'll pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So. Do you want to read a proclamation? At this time, we have a proclamation read by Councilmember Lauracella, representing March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five as the First Responders Wellness Week. Chief Patrick Smith and Officer Matt Linnigan of Lakewood Police Department, please join him at the podium.
All right, well, I get the opportunity to read this proclamation on behalf of our city council here to recognize this important First Responder Wellness Week. I've had a chance to work with South Sound nine-one-one myself as a representative in council and see all the work that our first responders do and being able to connect to all of them. So I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services, personnel, nine-one-one dispatchers, correctional officers, and members of other organizations in the public safety sector come together to protect and aid our community in the event of an emergency. And whereas first responders risk their life and safety every day in the performance of their duties to protect our residents. And whereas first responders are tasked with handling dangerous and complicated situations. And whereas nationwide, law enforcement officers will go through an average of one hundred and eighty-eight critical incidents throughout the course of their career. And whereas first responders often experience stress that has real physical impacts, including cardiac issues, diabetes, obesity, and sleep issues. And whereas first responders are up to twenty-five and a half times higher risk for developing post-traumatic stress disorder when compared to individuals without such experiences. And whereas first responder wellness includes management of issues, including but not limited to sleep, fitness, nutrition, fatigue, anger management, post-traumatic stress, and loss. And whereas we recognize the integral role first responders play in our community and the benefits derived from their hard work, commitment, sacrifice, and unhesitating dedication. And whereas research shows that fostering a strong wellness culture inside first responder agencies enhances relations within the communities they serve. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council does hereby recognize March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five through March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as First Responder Wellness Week in our city of Lakewood, and we encourage all residents to recognize and to actively support our local first responders. Proclaim this seventeenth day of March, twenty twenty-five, signed by Jason Whalen, our mayor, our deputy mayor, Mary Moss, and the rest of city council. So, thank you. And if you guys would like to speak, feel free. Sure.
I don't get to these very often, so I don't know any of you personally. So my name is Matt Likey. I'm an investigator with the police department. I work in the special assault unit. I've been a police officer for twenty-one years. I've been in Lakewood for seven of those years. He kind of said it all in the proclamation. I had kind of this big speech, but I don't think I need to give some big speech. What I would like to say is I would look forward to interacting with any of you in the future about funding, future funding for Officer Wellness, because as of now, our budget for peer support and wellness is zero dollars. I would like to get that up a little bit. Around the country, there's a lot of innovative ideas that other police departments are using to retain officers and to keep them for recruiting and retention. And I would like to maybe speak to some of you, some of you all in the future. So if you have any questions, you can come directly to me. I am the Peer Support and Officer Wellness Coordinator as of late last year. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. The Lakewood Police Department runs a very comprehensive peer support program. Investigator Matt Likey is kind of humble in what he does and what he says, but he does a great job for the department. This year, he put together the Officer Wellness Room, complete with a massage chair, ambient lighting, and other things for the officers to use on a daily basis. Gives them a place to go for a timeout. We also have wellness events for our officers on a daily basis. We have a workout room downstairs, and we also recognize our officers. We have a full wall dedicated to officer recognition, all in support of our officers and wellness. We're trying to do as much as we can to support our officers and ensure that they have a great environment to work, but also to support them on a daily basis. And so we appreciate council and we appreciate the recognition, and we're very thankful that you've taken the time to recognize this important issue that affects law enforcement on a daily basis. Thank you.
You're good. Can you get full pictures? Okay, next on our agenda is public comment. And public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live, virtual, or in-person comments. You can send your comments in advance by mail to Brianna Schumacher, City Clerk at six thousand Main Street, southwest in Lakewood, Washington, nine eight four nine nine. Excuse me. Or B S Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting has been provided to the city council electronically, and the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Deputy Mayor, we received written comments in advance from Eric and Jen Chandler.
Thank you. Please announce that members in the audience may comment on items related to any matter related to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited three minutes per person. Virtual comments. And if you would like to provide live virtual public comments, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling, by telephone, dial one two five three two one five eight seven two, and enter the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three, or visit zoom.us and enter the meeting ID number. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon. For those participating by calling in by telephone, to use the raise hand feature, you press the star nine on your phone. And when you are unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Outside of public comment, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise your hand for the duration of the meeting. You will not be acknowledged, and your microphones will remain muted except for when you are called upon. So please call them the ones who have raised their hands. So tonight, we alternate weeks as to how we begin. So tonight, we start with our virtual people's. City Clerk?
First individual we have is, I think, Christina Manetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good evening, everybody. This is Christina Manetti from the Gary Oak Coalition Lakewood. We would like to ask what the city plans to do to remedy its botched attempt to solve the algae problem at Wahop Lake. The city's report tonight proclaims that the alum treatment there has been a success, solving the algae problem as it set out to do. Quote, "The alum treatments have been effective in reducing phosphorus concentrations and subsequent cyanobacterial blooms, providing a safer lake environment for the community." Mr. McClellan's recent article in the Suburban Times, however, paints a very different picture. Yes, you might not have the original problem, but there are new ones no less troubling. The first giveaway is Wahop's color. The photos in the city's report show in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three pictures of the lake looking a very weird, unnatural solidon shade of green. The city seems pleased with how it looks, but the lake's color is disturbingly sterile and unnatural. Mr. McClellan says that the exceedingly clear water, in the beginning, was soon replaced by cloudy green algae. He writes, "The algae problem which the treatment was designed to eliminate failed, and now we have new types of algae, some toxic, inhabiting the lake," end quote. Comparing the turbidity to that of Lake Louise, he says that the secu disc, to measure turbidity, can be lowered six to eight meters, twenty-four feet at maximum, there before you can't see it, but only point three to point five meters in Wahop. Quote, "The whole point of reading Wahop Lake of algae has been a colossal failure, at least in terms of its effect on algae," he writes. Another problem is the alkalinity. Mr. McClellan tells us that according to his measurements, Wahop Lake, quote, "is about twenty times more alkaline than a chlorinated swimming pool. You definitely don't want to get your skin or your dogs in contact with that water," end quote. "Now the whole lake is filled with water so alkaline that it will burn your skin. How is this a success? A new kind of toxicity for humans, animals, and fish, but none of that old algae?" Which brings us to the effect on wildlife. As you can imagine, a lake in this condition is now inhospitable to biological life of all kinds. The Audubon bird count demonstrates this. Sure, there might not be those old pesky, toxic algal blooms, but the city of Lakewood has at great cost to taxpayers essentially killed Wahop while killing the toxic algae. It's like pouring hydrochloric acid over an eczema patient. Problem solved! Now, the questions concerned citizens are posing to the city are, "When and how will it fix what it has destroyed?" We would like to ask for answers to these questions instead of the predictably misleading self-congratulatory announcements on this and other environmental topics. It's time for you to make Lakewood's environment a priority. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I would like to acknowledge that the mayor has arrived.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. The luck of the Irish was not with me tonight, but I am here. Next is Derek Faust.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, city council members and mayor, assistant mayor, or deputy mayor, rather. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I also am going to be commenting on Wahop Lake. What has been done to treat the toxic algae problem is in the past. We can't go back and change that. However, as Christina mentioned, and has been documented by private citizens, there have been changes, both in terms of chemical parameters, pH. There is a shift in the algae species that are present. No longer a toxic species, but we still have an algae bloom. I'm not commenting on behalf of the college, but I was there with my student just a couple of weeks ago, and as she collected a water sample, she commented, "Wow, this is really green." And there's no way I can respond to that other than yes, it is, and explain some of the history and the ecology that has gone on. So we cannot go back and change the alum treatment that has occurred. But we can look to the future and what we can do, because in my time here, in seven years here, it is, the ecology of that lake has changed. You no longer have waterfowl using it to the extent that it did in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen prior to the treatment. I am not here to play the blame game. I am here to look for what we can do to move forward to help the lake recover and be a better ecosystem and be a jewel of Fort Selkham Park. I think this is a goal that all city council and all of you and the citizens can get behind. I have expertise in water quality. I am willing to offer that for free to help come to a solution, come to a plan for the future. A lot of people use that park, and it is a great park. A lot of great work has been done by the city to make it better. But the lake is not a healthy ecosystem, whether you look at chemical water quality or just observations of the organisms using it or not using it in this case. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that's the last hand I see raised for virtual public comment. Am I missing any hands?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. And did you already call those in person or went to Zoom first? Okay, so those who are physically present, who would like to address council during the public comment period, now is the time. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to provide public comment. Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March third, twenty twenty-five. B, motion number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, authorizing the execution of the Pierce County Force Investigation Memorandum of Understanding. C, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero five, authorizing the retirement, conversion, to, and sale of Lakewood Police K-9 Officer Kona as surplus property of the city of Lakewood. D, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Arts Commission meeting minutes of January sixth, twenty twenty-five, and two, American Lake Lake Management District Number One Advisory Committee meeting minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any member have any item they wish to remove from consideration on the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Second?
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Bell, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. There is no unfinished business. Items for new business include those items for discussion. The first is the five-year twenty twenty-five, twenty-nine Consolidated CDBG Plan Update. And for this, we have our Housing Division Manager, Mr. Jeff Gumm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. This is my fifth time to be involved in this process, so it's an honor to be here. And hopefully, I'll try and navigate this kind of long and winding road and get through fairly quickly. So as most of you are aware, the city is required to provide a five-year action plan, as well as an annual action plan, as part of this coming five-year process. So we closed out the twenty, or we are closing out the twenty twenty-four five-year plan and moving into the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine plan, and that's what we're here to discuss. So the important thing to remember about the five-year plan is it's designed to be a very broad document. It looks at community development needs. It looks at housing needs. It looks at infrastructure needs that a city has, and it looks at resources that the city has available to it, including CDBG and home, to basically assess those or to meet those needs, meet the needs that are defined in the five-year plan and move forward each and every year to meeting its goals. So with city of Lakewood's plan, we are part of a home consortium with the city of Tacoma. So our five-year plan is kind of a little bit broader than some other jurisdictions. We have to include the city of Lakewood's goals and needs, as well as the city of Tacoma's. So ours is a little bit more broad in that sense. The five-year plan, as I mentioned, it does include an annual action plan. We're also required to do what's called an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and that is, as it sounds, I mean, we look at the citizens of Lakewood. We look at the challenges specific to low-income citizens. So things like discrimination, access to affordable housing, access to transit, jobs, kind of all of those things. What's impeding low-income citizens from improving in the city of Lakewood? So those are the elements that we're considering tonight. The five-year plan, the annual action plan, and kind of a very brief review or a brief overview of the analysis of impediments, which is not necessarily discussed in great detail in these documents. So the annual action plan that we're moving forward with in twenty twenty-five as proposed is kind of a stay the course as council or as staff is looking to recommend to council. Staff is looking in the first year to do more of a housing-related focus. So the plans that is proposed would look to continue some of the initiatives that we've done over the years. So major home repair, which would be housing rehabilitation for existing family houses. Some of the programs would be the emergency assistance for displaced residents, some of the emergency payments programs, as well as home admin for affordable housing. Administration would be a consideration that we would move forward with. But I'll go through some of that in a little bit more detail and kind of how the city has got to that recommendation. So the five-year plan did establish five goals. And as I mentioned before, the five goals, five goals in the plan are a little bit more broadly stated than in other jurisdictions. So the five-year goals established in this five-year plan were, one, to advance economic development and equity; two, to prevent and reduce homelessness and housing instability; three, to support diverse rental and homeowner, homeowner, I'm having a hard time with the worst word tonight, homeowner opportunities. There we go. And support infrastructure improvements would be goal number four. Stabilize existing residents and neighborhoods would be goal number five. And the goals aren't necessarily ordered in order of importance. They were all determined based on the data and demographics and need and so forth that we looked at when we came to the conclusion of the goals between Lakewood and Tacoma, that they were all high priority, and they're kind of fairly similar to what we've seen over the last five-year cycle. There isn't a huge swing in anything that we saw for need in the city of Lakewood or in the cities of Tacoma. It was fairly consistent. So the goals are fairly consistent to what they were last year. On page forty of your agenda packet, the goals are established in the five-year plan for the city of Lakewood. They're identified in table two. So there's a number of activities under prevent and reduce homelessness and housing instability. The major activities for that would be the major home repair. Twenty households would be served. CDBG emergency payments proposed would be sixty households served, or sorry, sixty persons served. Emergency assistance for displaced residents, ninety households. So the emergency programs, both of those, would look to serve about a hundred and fifty persons. We're proposing something new tonight, and I will go through that with you a little bit. Not necessarily new, but fairly new to the city of Lakewood, but a home tenant-based rental assistance program that would serve a hundred and fifty persons. And again, I'll go through that a little bit later in detail when we go through the home funding recommendations. The second goal that the city would look to serve over five years would be support diverse rental and homeowner opportunities. And again, this is kind of, as it has been in years past. We've worked a lot with Habitat. We've worked a lot with Home Ownership Center, LASSA, those organizations, to develop affordable housing. So that's what this plan would look to do. It would be looking to develop more single-family housing. So through Home Ownership Center in Northwest and Habitat, future projects. Home Ownership Center has approached the city of Lakewood for the next funding cycle to redevelop property in the city of Lakewood, nine thousand and six Washington Boulevard. They purchased it, I believe, about three or four years ago. And they've had some executive director transition and weren't able to finish it. So they're planning on coming back in the next year or two to apply for funding for that as well. Rental housing constructed. This is in the five-year goal, just because we didn't complete it in the last five-year goal. So these are the five home units that LASSA is constructing for the city of Lakewood. They're constructing twenty-six units total. Five of those would be funded with our program, with home funding that's already been allocated. The goal to support public infrastructure and improvements in the five-year plan, we're looking to serve twenty thousand nine hundred and ten citizens of Lakewood. And then stabilize existing residents and neighborhoods would be through abatement activities. So fifteen houses would be removed that are considered vacant and blighted. And I wish I could say we were in a year of certainty with budgeting, but as you're all aware, there's a little bit of upheaval going on. So some of this comes with a grain of salt. We're trying to figure out where we're going and what budgets are going to look like. So staff. trying to figure out where we're going and what budgets are going to look like. So staff knowing that, we've we've kind of projected a little bit lower than what we've had over the years. I don't I don't know that that will be the case. It might actually be a little bit lower than what we're projecting. But right now, staff is projecting we'll receive about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in CDBG funds in twenty twenty five. And we're projecting we'll receive about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in home funds. So each of those is about a one, one and a half, two percent decrease somewhere in that ballpark. And as I mentioned earlier, staff is recommending a stay the course in the initial year of the five-year plan. So we did have some conversations with Public Works and Parks to identify needs in the city of Lakewood that both of those divisions need. And Public Works was able to identify a couple of road projects that are later on in the funding cycle. So in in years four and five, we've proposed a couple of projects with Public Works. The reason being is they're they've got so many projects going on right now. They they didn't necessarily have time to come up with another CDBG-funded project. So we're looking to fund in in the later cycle with Public Works. We also discussed with Parks and Parks has a a number of projects. One of the projects that they were requesting CDBG funds or will be will be Edgewater Park in year two of the plan. And Edgewater Park would include improvements to Foster Road. So Edgewater Park is going to have a complete road redevelopment with one-way roads in certain areas, and Foster will be a one-way road. So there's there's some improvements in year two that they were looking to fund with CDBG. Public Works specifically picked the two projects that they did, Pine Street South, which would be year four of the plan, and Seminole Road in year five of the plan, because they're they're fairly small projects. And they don't have a a funding source for those yet. Small projects are not easy for them to fund. They're they're not easy to get tiger grants for. They're not easy to get Public Works Trust Fund grants. It's it it's it's harder for them to do, which for CDBG is a good thing, because a smaller project is is much easier for CDBG to do. As as you're all aware, CDBG and and home, they have a lot of a lot of red tape and a lot of strings. So a smaller project is probably a little bit easier for CDBG in the way of of rules and regulations to kind of get in the way of their projects. So and the other thing that we looked at was kind of trying to figure out how to stay timely. The CDBG funds, you get a a year and a half of funds that you can have in reserve before you before you're not timely. So you have to spend your funds about every two years. And depending on how infrastructure projects go, sometimes they they end up lagging a little bit longer or so forth. And by having a housing approach in year one, an infrastructure approach in year two, and then back to housing in three, and then infrastructure, if any of those projects do slow down, this would give the the council the opportunity to to move funding from one project to another and and kind of shift your goals fairly easily back and forth over the over the five-year cycle. It it would require a plan amendment. But those are are fairly simply to accomplish. And I I think it would give a a fairly nice course of action and and some opportunities if if they arise.
Mr. Gumm, just a quick question on the potential Foster Road improvement. I'm looking at page forty-three or so of the packet that has the map, if you will, of the low and moderate census tracts.
Correct.
So the Foster Street lies also within the same census track as the potential downtown park, right?
It it could be in the potential downtown park, yes.
Where we have the current activity going on over by the old QFC, correct? I think that's right.
Yeah, the the downtown park is, I mean, it it's it's in an adjacent census tract, but depending on on who the public serves, I mean, it 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 could be potentially in that census tract, yes, as as served.
Okay. Very good.
So for table three in your agenda packet on page forty-one goes through some of the CDBG recommendations. And this is again for fiscal year one, so twenty twenty five recommendations. Major home repair was recommended to be funded with three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty five funding. There's some program income that we anticipate every year around a hundred thousand dollars is comes in. We have to, we have to project that. There was a couple of funds that were unexpended in the last couple of years in cycles. So there was seventy-one thousand ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents. It was reprogrammed. That includes Fair Housing Counseling, forty-seven thousand dollars that was allocated in twenty twenty one that went unexpended. And it includes twenty twenty-three administration, twenty-four thousand ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents that was unexpended. So those would be proposed to be reallocated to major home repair. Housing would be emergency assistance for displaced residents. Allocation of thirty-five thousand dollars was recommended. Emergency payments program, again, a housing program, forty-five thousand dollars is recommended. CDBG admin of home housing, fifteen thousand dollars is recommended. The city's administration program, which is just the standard ten percent allocation of a hundred and five thousand dollars, is recommended. And the last column is NSP one abatement program. The city anticipates repayment of two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and those funds would then be used for the same NSP one abatements. So the, as the the mayor mentioned, on the on the next section of the agenda packet, page forty-three, the infrastructure projects are identified. There's a little bit of overlap on what, at least what it looks like. We we tried to highlight the the service areas. So service area one would be, or the project one service area would be the Edgewater Park, the the specific census tract right at Edgewater Park would be the service area for that. Project two, Pine Street, which is in the upper section of the map, the right side, that would be in year four, the census tract. There's two block groups that would be served by that road. It's fairly limited in nature and and fairly restricted to who goes down that road. The largest of the projects, or at least in the terms of service, would be project three, which is the Seminole Parkway or Seminole Road, which is the Tai School District, which serves a very large area of population. A lot of the kids around the neighborhood, and you can see the the census tracts. There's seven or eight of them that that would be served by that project specifically to get kids in and out of the school. So that would be sidewalks and street lighting and and so forth to improve the access to the school. So for twenty twenty five, the home allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there is also program income that the city is looking to receive. So the city is anticipating about a hundred and five thousand dollars just shy of 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 that in program income. And the staff is recommending a, the council would approve a tenant-based rental assistance, and the tenant-based rental assistance would be a one-time rental deposit assistance program. So it would help low-income households that are having issues moving from homelessness to being housed with the barrier that they don't have their first month, last month, and deposit and so forth to get into a house. That was one of the things that we heard. As part of this process, there was a fairly lengthy process of of outreach. The we've, we did two public hearings. There was a a long online survey. There was a number of presentations before boards and and different groups that we went out to. And one of the things that we heard in multiple occasions was a barrier to individuals that are low-income being able to move from place to place. And it was specifically identified as as the deposit assistance. There was a number of organizations that are that can get funding for people in low-income situations, some of the HEN programs, Section Eight, and some of those things. They can pay for the monthly rental to get people in. But even those programs have a hard time with the deposits to get them into them. So that was something that we were looking to address with the home funds and use the hundred and four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars in program income to do a tenant-based rental assistance program to assist individuals. And with that, we assumed a number served would be twenty to thirty households based on standard household size. That would be between forty and sixty persons served. And the the city did have a fairly similar program when the coronavirus funds came down a few years back. So in twenty twenty-two, the city did have a program. It ran for about a year and a half, and we served about four hundred, oh, yeah, four hundred and seventeen individuals and a hundred and seventy-eight households. So it was, it was a fairly effective program. And again, it was a, it was a one-time program. So there wasn't a a long-term commitment established to provide rent over a long period of time. It was getting somebody into stable housing, and then they were able to stay there, and and we were able to assist different people moving down the line. So table four, that being said, the the tenant-based rental assistance staff is recommending the program income of one oh four nine ninety-five be used for tenant-based rental assistance. There would be an allocation for Affordable Housing Fund, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-five allocation, plus a hundred thousand dollars in program income. So the Affordable Housing Fund would have three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars allocated, and and this is the fund that we use for all nonprofits or even for profit developers to come in and apply for developing affordable housing. So it it just sits there until a a project comes forward, and we bring those to council for approval. And the final thing would be administration at ten percent. And that is specific to our consortium that Tacoma uses ten percent of our CDBG, or sorry, our home dollars for admin to manage the program. As I mentioned before, the the kind of the major milestones are identified in your agenda packet, some of the some of the public hearings and so forth. Those are also included in your agenda packet, the summation of of all of those hearings and the the fifty-eight comments that we received online as part of the the public outreach. Moving forward, the major dates are April first to April thirtieth. We have a thirty-day comment period. In that thirty-day comment period on April twenty-first of twenty twenty-five is a public hearing here before you all as council. Out of that meeting, May fifth, we're back before you at council to approve the final plan, the annual action plan, the funding allocations and so forth. And then May fifteenth, it is submitted to HUD. So with that said, are there any questions that council has?
Councilmember Brandsetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gumm, you know, thank you for the months of work that 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 go into this to to include all of the Lakewood-based work and the coordination with the city of Tacoma to to make this this work for us, for us to be included in this this potential revenue. But in in table four, which is the home funding recommendations, the two hundred and four thousand plus revenue that's included in that, in that table. And it, the the note says received from prior year repayments. What prior year window does that refer to? Does that include the window that we're in like right now, or is that the window that ended prior to this CDBG year?
Yeah, so good question. With home funds, all of the program income that you receive, in essence, a year ago, so last year, would be considered program income that is is recouped in this fund. It's it's a little different than CDBG. It lags a year. So any monies that are received now will report next year's program income. With CDBG, any money you receive now, we report this year's program income. So those were actually two years ago or older funds. And I believe about ninety percent of them were from rehab loans that we loaned to single-family individuals that paid us back after they either sold their house or refinanced or something.
So let me just restate what you said. That on this chart, this is money that has already in the coffers.
Correct. It is already here.
On the similar chart that called top programming you, which was a CDBG chart, a check that came in today would add to that because there's a difference in terms of which years program income falls. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, C CDBG's got a little bit of a projection because we're not done with it yet. So.
So the C CDBG is a conservative projection on your half, whereas this is a firm number?
Correct.
Okay. Then let me back up to table three. And table three, there is a section for housing emergency assistance for displaced residents. And we've, it's got thirty-five thousand dollars of CDBG fund proposed to be into that in that when it says homelessness provision for fifteen to twenty individuals, that fifteen to twenty number is a one-year number or a five-year number?
That would be an annual action plan, one-year number. For fiscal year twenty twenty five.
The five-year number would be seventy-five to a hundred, or is it?
Yeah, the the seventy-five numbers, I'm sorry, the five-year number, I think, was sixty. Yeah. Emergency assistance for displaced residents was sixty.
Yeah, the the five-year number was 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 sixty. I guess the question is, would thirty-five thousand stretch? I mean, it's even seems you know, a displaced person, you've got to move them, you've got the the deposits of some some rent is two thousand, just two thousand dollars going to actually do that for a displaced person? Or if we were displacing a family of three, a family of three, say, does that count as three people? Or does that count as one displacement? So this, this one says individuals, whereas the one up above it says households. So is
Yeah, and those those are the reason that they kind of jump around households and and persons is based on HUD's national objectives. I mean, they they define what we're serving. So this specific activity, the emergency assistance for displaced residents, is looking at individual persons. So a household that had three would be considered three persons that you're moving.
So in terms of you evaluating how much assistance to provide for resident of an of a of a of a building that we've decided was unsafe and it was abandoned, abated, and and it goes off that I mean, it would seem that what we would want to do is we would want to assist them with whatever funds are needed. But do we screen that based on if it's an individual or if it's a family, do we how do you make that distinction about how much money, even if they both are going to need need the same amount of money to find another place?
Yeah, it's that's that's another good question. So luckily, we've been doing this program for quite a while now. Trying to remember when we started EADR. I think it was in two thousand and ten, somewhere in that in that ballpark, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. So we've got a lot of a lot of years of data and looking at it. And that has been a fairly consistent number. Most of the years were were between I I don't remember off the top of my head, between thirty and fifty thousand dollars that we've allocated. And we haven't necessarily run through all those funds every year and run out before clients ran out. So thirty-five thousand dollars is based on kind of an average of what we've seen. And the average household, is it, is it about two thousand six hundred, two thousand seven hundred dollars in assistance over that timeframe? So based on kind of what we've done and what I what I think we're going to do, that that gets us somewhere close to to what I think the need would be. When when we do relocation, there's there's also a a number of things that we do. So when we close a building, it may not be everybody in the building that needs assistance. Some of them aren't low-income, so they don't qualify for our programs. Some of them, depending on what we close the building for, if it was the owner of the building who caused the problem or wasn't fixing the problem, then we typically have of the building who caused the problem or wasn't fixing the problem, then we typically have the owner pay those relocation fees to the tenants. The city doesn't have to do those. And, and in other instances where there clearly isn't anybody at fault, those are the types of programs that we would look to assist individuals with, with this funding. So there's, there's, if there's a fire in a building, there's no direct link to, say, the owners caused an issue with the habitability of the building or, or left it, so there's no functioning water. I mean, there, there aren't those issues. So based on kind of what we've seen over the years and the different types of, of relocation that we've done, thirty-five thousand dollars is a, is a kind of middle-of-the-road number that I think would be a, a fairly reasonable number that I don't see the activity being highly demanded or in, in more highly demanded um numbers than, than the thirty-five thousand dollars would cover. And if, if, if we're going to help what we're proposing fifteen to twenty individuals, that's going to be typically about twelve homes, twelve to thirteen homes, depending on what sort of assistance we're looking at. And that's, that's, again, that's kind of the number that we typically help every year is between ten and fifteen households.
So is the thirty-five thousand dollar number in year one envisioned to being a rather standard annual number for five years? Or is there, as, as the years go on, is there any sort of inflationary impact on this particular program?
Um, no, uh, based on kind of what we've got with, with the, the numbers that we'd be looking for emergency payments and the emergency assistance program, the two of those kind of, you can kind of change some, some people back and forth depending on what type of assistance they need. So one, one will help with more of the rental deposits and first and last and that kind of stuff. And the assistance, the other program can help with moving costs, or if all their furnishings are gone, we can, we can do some of those things to help them kind of get back on their feet. Um, the, the number isn't necessarily predicted. I mean, I believe the, I think it's sixty that we were looking to assist over the five years. So based on serving twenty households a year, it wouldn't be every year. It would be potentially up to three of the five years. You'd be looking to fund the EADR program. Um, and again, it's, as, as we go through the programs and see kind of where we are with, with balances, if, if there still are balances that we can carry over from one year to the next, we would typically come back with a, a lower number. I mean, if, if, if we don't expend all of the EADR funds, we would be requesting a smaller number. Um, which kind of leads me to the very next one, which is the emergency payments program. The request was forty-five thousand dollars, which is lower than we, what we have typically asked, between eighty and ninety thousand is what we've been using. But I anticipate this year, we're going to carry over about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. So rather than ask for another eighty thousand dollars, we're, we're going to continue an eighty thousand dollar program with monies left over in, into this year. So there's a little bit of, of kind of crystal ball, looking at what we've done and, and kind of what I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking will be happening in the future.
And in the past, in previous five-year programs where we've had the same sort of uh projection going on. In, let's say that you had a program such as the housing emergency assistance and it doesn't use thirty-five thousand dollars in year one, and there's six thousand dollars that wasn't used. Is it been our strategy? Being, is, is what the council done? If they re, reprogram that six thousand dollars into the same program? Uh, or have we done something different and it could move anywhere on the chart?
Um, kind of a little bit of both. Um, primarily, the funds have been left where they, where they are to use for future activities. Um, so if there was in, in your example, if there were six thousand dollars left, typically that's a fairly small number. We would leave it in the, leave it in the emergency displaced program, um, and use it to finish out this year or to move into the next year. Um, if we've had larger sums, uh, that we, we've typically come back and reallocated those to other projects, which is what I was proposing in this one. There was forty-seven thousand dollars in one program and twenty-five thousand dollars in admin that were unexpended. So with some of the larger funds, we tend to, to bring those back to council and reallocate those.
And then, now if I can just back up to table two, is, which is a, a, a five-year chart that talks about that. Does the number proposed column, how important is that to HUD? I mean, are, are, are they looking at each line or are they looking for the total? And are we just making effort to look good with a twenty thousand dollar number on one, one, twenty thousand individuals?
No, that
Number on one line?
No, that, that one actually is, the, the number that, that I know for certain, um, were the city to fund those three infrastructure projects, that is the, the number of beneficiaries that we would be looking to serve. So it, it, that's based on census tracts and, and people that would be served by an infrastructure project. When you're looking at the other number, say twenty for uh major home repair households served and, and ninety for emergency assistance, those are, those are just based on conservative estimates, that kind of what we've seen in the past, based on five years of history in the last year, we're, we're kind of projecting what we, we're going to be doing in the next year. We tend to be a little conservative in our numbers. I'd rather be conservative than throw out a large number that we're never going to meet. Um, we're typically fairly close in our, in our numbers. Every once in a while, we, we surpass them by a long ways. When we had CDBGCV funds, I mean, we, we were doing things that we had no idea that we would be doing uh when we did receive those funds. So they're, they're kind of based on what I've seen over the last five years. And then, and if we've done these programs for a while, kind of look back and, and see who we've served and, and try and project that moving forward.
So, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, when you say it's based on people within those census tracts, so the uh for instance, the census tract with the Seminole Road project, which is about three blocks. Um, but it's in a fairly mid-sized census tract in terms of area. But we counted every resident in that census tract as as served?
Yes, you do. You're good?
Okay. I, well, I, I guess that I, that I would, I, I, I would guess my, my other question, I guess, has to do with um, you and, and, and your staff that manage CDBG. Um, and to how many of you are there and what percentages do you also get your salaries paid for from other sources other than CDBG?
Yeah, so there are two and a quarter staff members. And realistically, we're all kind of filled out differently. So my time is almost one-third, one-third, one-third in what I do. So it, it's fairly consistent over like a year. So a third of it would be used for dangerous building abatement. Um, a third of my time would be used for rental housing and a third of my time would be CDBG and home. And that's fairly consistent. Um, we have a program coordinator, Martha Larkin. Her time is one hundred percent CDBG, so she's doing a lot of the, the loans for our single-family housing um rehab. So she'll do the loan qualifications, underwriting. She'll put loan documents together. She monitors all of the loans. Um, when people pay off loans, she has to do subordinations. Um, there's all kinds of refinancing from family members and a lot of her time is, is just CDBG. Um, she does a little bit here and there if we need her for some other things. Uh, the other staff member, Shannon Bennett, is two hours a day roughly CDBG, so about twenty-five, twenty percent of her time is CDBG. Um, I do anticipate that to stop in July of this coming year for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, only because I'm not certain where we're going to be with funding. So if, if our funding is cut dramatically, then that would be the first position I would say, hey, you know what? We're going to have just myself and, and Martha do these. And, and that's the other thing to think about too, uh, for council. I mean, if, if funding is cut substantially, we've got to look at, okay, what what can we accomplish with a reduced amount of funding and, and what can we do with the least amount of staff possible? So that's, I'm hopeful that we don't get there, but um be it what it is right now, that may be something we'd be looking at in the next, uh, next discussion we have.
So in the um the, the, the position that you have that is a, 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 a point-two-five FTE and you say July, that means they're not funded at all in this five-year plan because the current five-year plan ends in, in June. Is that right?
Correct. And that, that person's a human services coordinator already, which I believe is a two-thirds um position already. So it would, the position would continue. It just wouldn't do CDBG. It would just do human services.
Okay. Um, and then what would you do if you're wrong about the numbers and in fact that they're higher? Are, are, are there, are there some proposed uses? At least in your head?
No, no. Uh, if they were higher, I, I would say kind of stay the course. I mean, the, that, that, that person that, that would be cut with funding is going down typically does a lot of the, the qualifications and so forth for some of the emergency programs. So there's a lot of triage and, and kind of a lot of the programs that we do, when you're helping somebody be relocated from an emergency situation, it, it is a lot of, lot of paperwork and a lot of lifting. And, and those individuals are don't necessarily have access to everything because their house has been closed or it's been burned or it's been flooded. So if, if the funding stays or, or is where I predict it, I would say stay the course and that person could continue on if that the current load that they're doing now.
All right, that's, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Laura Sawa.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Gum, for uh this presentation and for all the work you've done to help the residents who need it the most in our community. Uh, I just had some numbers questions real quick. So on page forty-one, uh, we talk about the CDBG numbers for this year and last year, and the home numbers for this year and last year. So last year's CDBG numbers was five hundred and thirty-three thousand or so of income, right?
Correct.
And then on page thirty-nine on table one, the expenditures for CDBG, I'm adding that up to about a hundred and thirty-five K. Is that right?
Hold on, you're on table one?
Uh, yeah, table one for twenty twenty-four. Looks like there's three entries in that table for that year.
Oh, yeah. So the this table's a little, it's a little different. This is, this is kind of an up-to-date expenditures for all the activities. I think I did this about two weeks ago, week and a half ago. So this isn't necessarily allocations, it's expenditures.
Okay.
It's just capturing what we've expended. If, if we've, if we've allocated three hundred thousand dollars to a road project and we've only spent a hundred and fifty thousand this year, it would only be showing the one fifty in this because it's only showing you what's been
Gotcha. So there's still potentially some allocations from twenty twenty-four that aren't represented on here.
Correct.
We don't have three hundred and thirty thousand of carry forward for CDBG funds from last year to this year that would then show up in this year's plan?
They won't, we do have CDBG funds that are carrying over from last year. Yes, they're, they're not included in the plan. They're, they're like last year's plan. They haven't been expended. So
Okay.
They will hit this chart eventually.
Gotcha. Is there a similar table to this for the home funds? I didn't see it in the package.
I do have one. Um, it's been a while since I updated it because Tacoma does the admin side of it. So it's up to them to, to tally that. We haven't over the last trying to think of what we've allocated over the last five years. Most of our funding has gone to the affordable housing fund. And if I remember off the top of my head, the affordable housing fund has about six hundred and forty thousand dollars in it. Um, that's after the current loss allocation.
Okay.
So, six forty plus another three, we, we'd be back to just shy of a million um in the affordable housing fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Gum. I'm just briefly, uh, you had said that low income do not qualify for your program. How would, how would they handle when you run into that situation?
One more time?
The low income, they do not qualify for your programs. So how do you handle that?
Um, well, if, if they're low income, they qualify for our program. Um, we, we have, yeah, if they, you have to be eighty percent or below average median income. So they would qualify for a program. Sometimes what they want to do doesn't necessarily qualify for our program. So some of the activities that they, they want to do that, I mean, there's, HUD has certain limitations of things that I can and can't do. Uh, we've, we've tried to use some of the fourteen oh six funds to kind of do some of those activities. So in our rehab programs, we've done things that we can't do with CDBG funds. So fix fences that have fallen down for people. Um, if they've got a garage that's collapsing, believe it or not, I can't fix it with CDBG, but I can with fourteen oh six funds. So we've used those funds to kind of supplement some of the things that we can't do.
Thank you.
Mr. Gum, I have a couple of questions. Just on table three on the housing major home repair. So, first question is, how much of the totals there reflect fourteen oh six monies versus just straight CDBG funds?
That is all CDBG funds.
Okay, so fourteen oh six or somewhere else, not on this, obviously, right? We just have another bucket of money we use for that?
Correct. We have fourteen oh six. Um, we get about ninety-five thousand a year. And I'll have to, I can get you guys the exact number, but off the top of my head, it's in the three three hundred and eighty thousand dollar range, somewhere in that ballpark, three eighty or three ninety that we have.
On hand?
On hand.
Okay. So, and that, that leads to my question. I, I knew we had some fourteen oh six monies in a bucket somewhere else. When I look at the chart, uh, and we're going to have roughly four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars available potentially to help four to six or four to eight households with rehabilitation needs. It's not a, a huge bang for the buck. And I know part of it is on a loan basis that Ms. Larkin puts together. What's been the experience over the last few years with regard to the success of the rehab using this particular element of the CDBG funds?
Um, it's, it's been a fairly consistent program from, from a prescription of, of homeowners applying to the program. Um, we've, we've had a, a fairly decent not necessarily a waiting list, but I, I can't get to all of the clients usually in a year. The, the most kind of shocking thing to me is kind of seeing where prices have gone over the last five years. What, what we used to be able to do in a rehab for, say, fifty or sixty thousand dollars, we're now doing for a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so a lot of it is, is just driven by prices increasing. An average rehab now on a single-family house is, again, it's a hundred easy hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's, that's redoing electrical panels and roofing and windows and doors and painting. Um, redoing bathrooms. There, we're, we're not doing anything super special when, when we do these. It's, it's I, I wish we could, but it's, it's gotten fairly expensive. So just to, to maintain a, a single-family house, it's it's kind of gotten up there. The, the hard thing is, is a lot of these individuals, I'd say eighty percent are, are single um, retired individuals. And it's primarily the, the widow or the wife that's left that we're working with on, on a on a, I don't know, most of the time. And trying to, trying to somehow find a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fix your house is not an easy task for many.
Right. So I guess my, my question, I'm noodling over that. We do have the fourteen oh six monies that have some level of utilization for this particular major home repair. I, I'm just, I know you're in line for getting this out to public comment and going through the process this year for the five-year plan. I'm just thinking out loud a bit that if the census tract that we looked at on the table could include possible work in the new urban park, uh, could some of these down the road, a decision be made to reallocate those to something that might serve a greater number of individuals in that census tract and four to eight households?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of what staff was proposing in the allocation cycle was a, a housing allocation um, infrastructure, housing, and, and depending on, on how the funding runs through and how the programs run through. Typically, if, if you're allocating twenty twenty-five CDBG dollars, I mean, you're looking at, it doesn't start till July, um, of this coming year. And by the time we actually get to them with, with funding and, and getting them to it, we're, you, we're usually a year behind in, in actual allocations versus being served. So we're still working through twenty twenty-four funding, trying to get those people through it and use the funds. So, were there something that we needed to be flexible for? Then, yeah, that's, that's kind of how I was trying to set this up is, is put a decent amount in a, in a fund that if it's not Yeah, that's, that's kind of how I was trying to set this up is, is put a decent amount in a, in a fund that if it's not used, you can then.
Reprogram?
Yes.
Right, and I just, uh, re- recall looking at. The town of Yelm was able to successfully use C D B G funds. Or the reurbanization or redo of their urban park because of the census tract that they had to deal with. Uh, not had to deal with, but had, you know, wanted to serve differently, and I think they utilize those funds. For that spray park, now, there's been a conversation of ours to perhaps. Uh, assist the children in some of these areas that don't otherwise have access to water to maybe have. Maybe a spray park in that area in the new urban park and possibly funded with something like C D B G monies. So it's something to think about, you know, down the road. Uh, for a reprogram because that would be a source to do it and it would serve, in my opinion, a larger number. Of residents and, uh, families with children in the area, so. Just food for thought.
Yeah, that's.
Any other questions? Well, again, I echo the comments, this is a lot of work, uh, a lot of work. Unfortunately, for not a lot of dollars, I mean, it's a significant amount of money, obviously, for any city to have, but. It's a lot of work for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So I appreciate your work.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's almost, yeah, it's getting to be interesting with.
Yeah.
The level that you put in, so I appreciate your, uh. Appreciate your comments and thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you. So next we turn to a review of the proposed amendments to the Lakewood Municipal Code, chapter one point four four. Entitled General Penalties, and for this we have our Public Works Director, it looks like, Mr. Jeffrey Mack. And I also have, uh, Assistant Director Angie Silva down for this as well. So I'll let you tag team however you'd like.
All right, all right, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um, today in front of you, you'll see a proposal for an amendment to. Chapter one point four four of the Lakewood Municipal Code, uh, I'd be referring to it a few times, so the L M C. This is an update to ensure consistency across enforcement, really, it's setting out a framework for the notice. Of a violation, stop work order, penalties that would follow, and then any enforcement procedures as we move forward. The idea behind these changes is to enhance the city's ability to safeguard the public health, safety, and the welfare. So a little bit of background, currently, the enforcement mechanisms are kind of scattered throughout the L M C and what we look at. There are some that exist in chapter one, which is general provisions, health and safety under chapter eight. And title eighteen, land use and development code, title fifteen for building construction as well as public works. But when we look at titles like fourteen or sixteen, so fourteen being environmental or the shoreline associated. There really aren't any stop work, uh, abilities in that as it exists, so if we have someone who goes and. They're looking at cutting down trees or they're working in the shoreline, things of that nature. We don't have something that already exists to say, hey, stop in what we're looking at. So there are two primary programs that manage the enforcement, what we're looking at. If it is associated with a building permit, then it's the Planning and Public Works Department, the construction inspectors will go out. If it is something that is not permitted that we're looking at, or a nuisance property or dangerous building, et cetera. Then the Community Safety Resource Team from the Police Department will actually go out and they can handle that, what they're looking at. So some of the key amendments we're looking at, we're creating a standardized code enforcement methodology. Um, that'll be housed in one point four four that can apply to all the Lakewood Municipal Code. It'll start out with a notice, so first, uh, we look at voluntary compliance when it goes out, so we would contact the person and say, hey. Maybe you're unaware, let them know what the code is, have a conversation about it, ask them to stop. Uh, at that point, should they fail to stop, we can move forward to a stop work order. The idea behind a stop work order is to provide clear communication as to exactly what's gonna go into that. So we did build in a framework as to the information that would be shared. So for the property owner, it'd be the identified name of the property owner, the address, where we're seeing the violation. The statement of what the violation is, including the code citation as to what exactly is being violated, so they're aware of that. A statement regarding actions to address and remediate that violation, whether it's a permit or just stop work, um, stop the work that we're doing. There are two different sections where we can go ahead, we would normally afford twenty one days for them to go ahead and start applying for their permit would be the standard. But there are two that are immediate we would look at, so if there was an immediate hazard, there was a life safety hazard. Um, someone was starting and continuing with a tree, you know, removal, things of that nature, we can say stop now. Like, it's an, it's effective immediately, and then at the same time for erosion and sediment control. So when we go out and we look at sites, they're supposed to all have erosion sediment control laid out. But we do have times when sometimes runoff from the site discharges can get into a storm drain, can affect, you know, lake habitat, things of that nature. So those would be two instances where we can say immediately, you need to stop. Um, there's actually gonna be a statement also as to what the violation is, because in the different chapters that we go through. There are identifications as to what the level of violation is, some are gonna be a gross demean- misdemeanor, some are a misdemeanor, some are just civil infractions. So that will also go on the stop work order, so they understand exactly what they're violating. So in, in the end, kind of wrapping it up, it's the code enforcement consistency and efficiency. The idea that the public can go and look in the code and say, these are the steps that they're to take as to what they're to look at. And then at the same time, so that all of the staff is doing it in the same manner each time, right? A lot of the things when you, when you look at it are, um, like home sets and reps, repetition and. Uh, doing it the same way every time, then we go ahead, so if we have a standard operating procedure, which is what this is kind of laid out as. Then it makes it easier for everyone. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, does this at all involve anything about like red tagging a building or anything like that, or is it? Something totally different than?
No, so under title fifteen, there is the ability to red tag a building if it's a dangerous building. Title fifteen has its own, uh, ability, if there's danger, to go ahead and say, this building is red tagged. And that's separate, this is a stop work, like stop and desist, cease and desist is what it could be. Because it covers the gambit of what we have in the L M C, it's not just about structures, it could be anything we're really looking at.
And then, um, the rest of the language that currently exists is, does that? Does that work? Is that? I guess pursued by the, the city manager, or is it the Public Works Director, or is it?
So.
All over the place, and now we're just saying city manager or their designee?
City manager or designee gives the city manager the ability to assign anyone. When we look at it typically for what would be stop works or cease and desist. You would look to give that to like your building inspectors, your engineering inspectors, kind of the subject matter experts that know about the areas they're going out to look at. Um, we wouldn't want to send maybe, we're not gonna send a law enforcement officer out to go talk to somebody about dirty water running off. We'd look at the engineer, you know, inspector who's been to certified erosion and sediment control lead that can speak to that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Laura Sella and then Brant, Mr. Branstad, Councilmember Branstad.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, Mr. Reback, uh, so if I understand this right. There were some squishy areas in some of our processes for. Code enforcement and, and we're working to standardize that by getting this all into one. Chapter.
That's exactly it.
Okay, uh, are there other gray areas? That we should anticipate coming forward that need to be standardized within the Lakewood Municipal Code?
That, that is a very broad question, and I will respond with. I'm sure there are somewhere, but as we discover them, we go ahead and we make adoption to go ahead and make amendments.
Okay.
We, we address this as we find them, but right now, this is one we've had concern with in the past with some different, uh, goings on.
Are you aware of any other ones that are coming forward soon?
That, I've, you know, you've put me on the spot, I'll be honest, no, off the top of my head, I don't have one.
Thank you.
Councilmember Branstad.
So in the. In the staff summary presenting this to us this evening, it, it cited the fact that there are. Procedures in a number of sections and, uh, of the code. For different types of things, but which are similar. Okay, that would benefit from having a single. Detailed process in one place. That's what I sort of undergrasped was being the under, the understanding, and then there are some places of where. There's not a process spilled out, spelled out, and they, that would also benefit from having. A, a process spelled out in this one point four four.
Yes, sir.
So. I, I guess what I expected to see when I. After I read that and then I went to the ordinance was to. Have an ordinance such as the ordinance says, it says, this is the process, you, 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 you issue notices and. The notices have these specific things that you must be included in it to the resident. Uh, or the, or the person that's, that's receiving the. Notice of the, of a, of a, of a. Code enforcement violation or of a, and, and a need to correct it or an infraction to be able to go and do that. But that if we were. Trying to consolidate things in a single L, section of the code. I expected that we would then be. Deleting repetitive or conflicting language from other sections of the code. In order to particularly point people at this particular section. But I don't see that in the proposed ordinance, it were, you know, if we have something that we don't particularly. Think is applicable in all cases that exists in. Title eight or in title twelve, uh, and we, and we, we wanna. Create something here under title one, okay, that, um. Why are we not deleting the? Confusing language or the language we want to consolidate from where it already exists? And how does that not confuse someone that reads it in both places and they're slightly different in some respect?
Certainly, uh, happy to speak to that. When we look at the operative, the procedure that we're laying out, there is not currently in any of the other sections, a true procedure saying. We will do a notice of violation, then we'll do a stop work, then we'll move forward and we'll issue penalties. There is saying, hey, there's a violation, you, you can do a stop work, but there's not a procedure laid out in what we're looking at. There are sections in the other code that we could look to refine as we move forward and make adjustments to that section. But when this was looked at and when it was crafted, it was specifically died out to give a framework. Not to eliminate the other sections at that time, because some sections, it's gonna be a gross demeanor, misdemeanor if there's a violation. And that resides in that chapter and stays there, a violation of this chapter equals a gross misdemeanor. It, it doesn't speak to the procedure though on how we would move it forward, some of the timelines when we speak to it. We would handle that the same way as we do other conflicts within the code, so if we're looking at like the International Fire Code. Or then the International Building Code, whichever is more restrictive would be the applicable. Now, the way that we avoid the confusion is that in laying it out, we'll actually put out the code citation as to exactly what that is and the timelines associated with that. In the generated stop work or the notice when it goes out.
And. Uh, as, as I understood, that the ordinance and the procedures in it would sort of be applied to our code enforcement officers, our building official. Some others who might be involved in, in, in identifying a nuisance or, or dealing with it, Mr., some of Mr. Gum's people perhaps. Is the ordinance that we're, where we're changing in a new procedure, is that going to apply to the fire marshal in our, who is our. Someone from West Pierce who fills that role for us?
No, because they are outside of our control, we do not have the ability to stipulate how they'll handle the situation. They do have the ability though, through the I F C, to follow their own stop work issues. And the ability to perform inspections that are authoritative to them through the state building code council.
Okay, and then the process to approve this ordinance is, you're. Discussing it with us this evening, we're going to have a public hearing. On it, and a public hearing is required because?
Anytime there's a modification to the code or development code, we would go forward with a public hearing.
So it's just consider a modification of the development code?
It's an amendment to our code, it has to go before public hearing.
Okay, um. Do you have a crystal ball with any predictions about what sort of things we will hear from the community regarding? This change, or do you think it's going to be pretty benignly accepted?
Uh, if I was to look at it, I think one of the comments would be that it adds clarity to exactly the steps and procedures so that they understand. What our operating mechanisms are and how we'll move forward if there's a violation. Uh, currently, I don't believe that exists when it comes to some of the areas, because it is just a one line. You know, violations and like title twelve, things of that nature.
Right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, any other questions? Thank you very much, this comes back to us when?
I believe it's actually, I believe it's the seventeenth.
Seventeenth? Very good, and my other question is, it's, it's always good to update the code to make it. More accessible, more predictable for folks. Go ahead, Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, 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 just to, to clarify. Coming back on the seventeenth is when it comes back for us to hold a public hearing. It'll be then.
No action.
Yeah, any, it'll be, it'll then be April before it comes back to us for action.
Correct. Let me, let me ask the, the clerk for the date, I apologize.
The ordinance is scheduled to come forward on Monday, April seventh. This, this does not have a required public hearing.
Oh, there you go. I stand corrected, thank you.
So April seventh for action, yeah, no public hearing necessarily for that? Okay.
Then, then you won't hear anything from the public.
Right. So. Following up on the question. While it's always good to kind of update and make sure that we're. Providing consistent. Clear code provisions for the public, has there been a problem that we're trying to address? Over the course of time, is, you know, are we a, a solution looking for a problem or a problem's being resolved by this new solution?
The, there's a problem we're trying to address, we've had multiple violations, whether it comes to land use or a combination of land use or title twelve. And how we're moving forward and not a clear means on how to address that.
Okay. Very good. All right, well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Next, we'll turn to. Since it is Saint Patrick's Day, uh, the Wog Up Lake update. With Mr. Weston Otter, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. We have a brief presentation on Wahop Lake, I won't try the Irish present or pronunciation today.
Yes, exactly, Wahop.
Yeah. So also on, uh. Zoom this evening, we have Shannon Bradabo, who is a senior limnologist, environmental engineer with Tetra Tech. So she's on the call and she'll be available throughout the presentation if a question comes up and definitely afterwards, so. She's here with us this evening just remotely.
Very good.
And again, the reason for the presentation is we treated the lake, as everyone knows. And we've completed the testing that was required by ecology last year. So we prepared to report that is a summary of what was done, and that's what we're discussing primarily tonight. So just a little history about the lake, uh, it's a very small, very shallow lake. Uh, if you looked at the aerial photos in Pierce County's public G I S in nineteen forty five, they call it Mud Lake. Um, it's a very shallow lake, again, mean depth of about seven feet. There is no natural inflow or outfall, it is, uh, groundwater, um, affected. The, there's very little runoff that comes from the path down into the lake. Um, and again, looking back in time to twenty nineteen, council's goal was really to prevent toxic algae blooms. So this problem, uh, didn't occur overnight. Um, as we know, the history of Lakewood, Fort Silicon Park, or Fort Silicon was established as far back as eighteen forty nine. A lot of activity, uh, related to the hospital, the fort and other uses. Of that area have occurred, and Wahop Lake is the low point, and it's a good place to throw things away. Yeah, and they're not seen anymore, uh, more. Uh, I guess in my way of thinking time wise, more recently, but the first algae blooms were in nineteen seventy three. Um, Pierce County, who was the steward of the park at that time in the seventies. They did commission a study to evaluate what was going on, and then we hit two thousand eight through about two thousand eighteen. And the algae blooms were, um, very heavy and toxic. And so that was why the city moved forward in twenty fourteen with, um, ecology's help. Uh, from the funding side to come up with a lake management plan. And the recommendation from that plan was to. And the recommendation from that plan was twofold. One was an alum treatment and two was to evaluate dredging. So this slide on the bottom is it's a little bit hard to read, but what's represented in those bars is number of samples. As you can see there from two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen, a number of samples were taken and the red one, the red bars represent samples that showed that the toxic algae was above the state recreation guidelines. And then you can see in twenty twenty through present, some samples were taken again, samples are taken when the lake is observed to either have a scum or there is a suspect reason for a sample to be taken. So that's why it shows no data in those intervening years. But the two samples taken during the time of treatment, one was below the state standards and the other was non none detected. So we I mentioned dredging. Looking at that, it was evaluated, the cost range was substantial. The estimate range was between eight and thirty-five million dollars in twenty eighteen dollars. So if that were to be revisited, the cost would be much, much higher. But there's a number of other things to consider beyond just the cost of of doing it. It's that sediment. Where would we put it at the park, so to speak? Those sediments have a high probability of an elevated level of metals. Sarko smelter was in operation from eighteen ninety through nineteen eighty-six. So almost ninety years of operation. So there's a good chance there could be metals in those sediments. But that wouldn't be known until you started removing that sediment. The alum treatment, the design for that was based on cores that data was that provided by the University of Puget Sound plus an additional core sample that was taken. Based on the calculations, a very high dosage resulted. There's reasons for that. One is when you calculate what alum treatment for the for the lake, the water body you're evaluating, you look at the phosphorus in the sediments. Most lakes, you're going to see that phosphorus level drop off to background numbers in about ten centimeters. Wahop Lake has so much phosphorus in the sediment, it goes down fifty centimeters, so about five times more. So this number is really not unexpected. However, again, that's a large would be a large treatment amount. So the design was an adaptive approach. We can always treat again and again. So that's where the initial design was a hundred and twenty milligrams per liter split over three treatments over a one to two year period. And so we did the two forty, and I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but we did the two forty treatments in twenty twenty. And then based on the performance of those, a twenty milligram per liter treatment in twenty twenty-three. So that first treatment was during COVID. And the world was a little different. The park was empty. Actually opened the gates for the trucks to come in to to do the treatment. And you can see on that first treatment, you see that core sample there. When you apply the treatment, it turns into a flock and it settles. And it takes about six and a half minutes per meter of depth for that flock to settle. That's the rate it settles. So in fifteen minutes, it'll settle through the water column. And you can see that flock sitting on top of that sediment. It doesn't stay there as as a cap. It goes into the sediment. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the reasons for the lake color here. So we had another treatment in July. The one thing about that, we had already lost, we went from, I believe, we were in March, a little over six foot in depth. We were down to like four point eight feet in depth. So the lake is very, very shallow again. It was so shallow, it was hard to launch the barge. In that bottom center photo, you see the green forklift. That's a boom forklift that can only not only lift but push that and they use the smaller barge to do that treatment. Up in the top center, that photo, and it looks like somebody mowed grass. And that's a little bit smaller area than the previous photo because the lake had receded. The barge can only reach so much of the lake. So for the color of the lake after the treatment, it's the reason it's got that green color is no different than if you were swimming in the white beaches in the Caribbean. It's that reflection of the sun off of the white sediment, just like off a white sand. But again, that doesn't last. It's a short period of time before that flock dissipates. So that's the reason for the color. So then in twenty-three, we did the half dose treatment, so a twenty milligram per liter alum treatment had good performance from that treatment. And that's the treatment or the last treatment that's been done to date. Again, you can see in that top center photo what the flock looks like after it's been applied. I should mention the costs. So the cost for that treatment in twenty twenty-three was about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That was what was paid to the contractor. The twenty twenty treatment was two hundred ninety-seven thousand for the two two treatments. So there is a cost to alum treatment. So again, the lake is is very shallow and it's very telling in this slide. Brown and Caldwell in the twenty fourteen report established the full pool height for the lake at six point one feet. So that's that's our reference mark that we use. But you'll see in the summertime and especially in the last two years, what reflects the lower precipitation, the lower levels that we've observed in all lakes, that you lose half that lake depth every year. And again, so now you're dealing with a lake that's three feet in depth. If you have a wind event or even just even a moderate wind, you have sediment mixing that can occur because it's so shallow. I might also add, that's part of the reason why you see mostly lily pads around the edge of the lake. And during the summer, you'll see huge exposed areas of the lake. It's just the brown sediment. So not only is that sediment loose and very thick loose layer, but it's exposed, it's dried up, it's really hard for aquatic plants to establish themselves for that period of time when they go dry. So volume is related to depth. So we lose almost half the volume of the lake. So in those early years that are shown here, that twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is about thirty-five percent loss of volume of the lake. And then the last two years is forty-five percent. So not quite half, but a substantial reduction in volume of the lake. So phosphorus is the limiting nutrient. So that's why we focus on it. That's why we use the alum to bind that phosphorus. Those red bars reflect the phosphorus prior to treatment. So you can see we had some data from twenty fifteen and twenty twenty. The rule of thumb is at thirty-five milligrams or micrograms per liter. That's when you have the potential for algae blooms to occur. So we treated in twenty twenty. You can see those results in March and June of twenty twenty. Or sorry, June and September, the the values are very low, under twenty. And then when you approach the twenty twenty-three, you can see they were starting to creep back up close to that thirty-five micrograms per liter in the lake. And then you see those numbers go up in September, but then again, we're losing half that lake level and up to forty-five percent of the lake volume. So it's not surprising that it is more concentrated in those fall, end of summer, fall timeframe. So as, you know, overall treatment results, it was successful. It did meet the the goal, which is to prevent toxic algae blooms. We have not seen that since we've treated. The clarity improves during, as a result of the treatment, phosphorus and chlorophyll are removed. But as I mentioned earlier, the the levels come back up in that fall winter time when the lake levels low. So again, summarizing it, we haven't seen those blooms. Health Department, I talked to Health Department quite often. They have not posted any advisories. We do have signs around the lake. I walked the lake yesterday. One of the signs got torn off. I talked to Jay Anderson this morning. It'll be put back up here this week. We did the treatment through our permit with Ecology. We were compliant with all the requirements of that permit, all the testing requirements, and really that's a summary. There are one of the reasons for the summary report. It's a repository for all that data that was collected as part of our permit. And the summary report will be posted on the city's website starting tomorrow and available for anyone to review. So again, council goals were met. Nutrients were reduced in Wahop Lake. The treatment was really within our means. It was partially funded with flood control zone funds. And we haven't had those treatment or we haven't had those toxic blooms since. And at that, at this point, Shannon and I are both available if there's any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Otter, and thank you to Shannon if she's somewhere virtual.
We'll have her check in with us real quick, Shannon.
Yeah, to make sure she's online. I did ask the acting city manager to have Shannon available for us today because I was hopeful to get some feedback to start the conversation from Shannon's review or maybe Mr. Otter's review of some of the analyses that were published in the Suburban Times by a well meaning citizen who's had Wahop Lake certainly near and dear to his heart and the hearts of other citizen volunteers. So I'm interested in the perspective of our vendor, who is obviously an expert in these kinds of applications, in their thought on not just the positive impacts to the toxic algae, but the impacts that some citizens have communicated are concerning to them of impacts on fish, fowl and native plants.
Yeah, I'll have Shannon answer here in one second. Both Shannon and I read Tom's report or Tom's article in Suburban Times. I've known Tom for a long time and I went out and helped him volunteer sample at his request through the Pierce County Conservation District. So with that, I'll turn it over to Shannon if she wants to help address any of those questions of Mayor Wayland's.
Thank you. Welcome, Shannon.
Hi, thank you for having me. Can you please, I was having a hard time, my audio cut out. Could you please repeat your question?
Sure.
It was about the Suburban Times letter.
Yeah, you know, we have often received feedback from some of the citizens who have taken it to heart that the lake and its water quality are near and dear to them and many other residents. Question to you as the representative from Tetra Tech, our vendor, is what's what's missing, if anything, from their analysis that we should know about? Because they're complaining that the alum treatments may have favorably impacted the toxic algae, but they have unfavorably impacted waterfowl, fish and native plants. And so can you educate us a bit on whether that makes sense? And if it does, are we missing the point in our treatment or is there something else we should be considering?
Yeah, I think that there are unfortunately a lot of factors at play with Wahop Lake. In terms of the aquatic plants, we have done quite a bit of digging into any sort of historical records of what aquatic plants were in the lake. I was just became involved with Wahop Lake in twenty eighteen when we were hired to design the alum treatment. So I've kind of tried to do my due diligence by looking at, you know, ecology aquatic plant records. And as far as I can tell, besides the lily pads that are on the shorelines, the only other plant that was documented in the lake was coontail, which is a native plant, but it is a non rooted plant. So it's a plant that floats around in the water column. And I think that that's really telling because I believe that the sediments in Wahop Lake are not very conducive to rooted aquatic plant growth, given their very loose kind of floculent nature, but also because
Is it made worse by the alum treatment or is it just the nature of what they are or were prior to the alum?
Just the nature of what they are.
Okay.
Yeah, and and it also is the dramatic change in water level, which was not something I was anticipating or expecting to see. I think that that plays a pretty significant role in establishing any sort of aquatic plant life at that lake.
So Shannon, your group also made observations about wildlife at the lake. We didn't include it in the report because it's a substantial amount of information, but you want to talk to that as well?
Yeah, so our field crews, both in twenty twenty, well, throughout the monitoring period that we've conducted for the city, make field observations in a field notebook when they're out there on the lake and they, you know, make note of any observations of waterfowl or wildlife or aquatic organisms like fish and turtles. And especially this past year, following the twenty twenty-three treatment, they did a, they documented every waterfowl that they saw, and they saw quite a bit of waterfowl at the lake throughout the course of the year. Lots of osprey, eagle nest, lots of geese, which unfortunately also contribute to the nutrient problem. And so we can, you know, send, include all like the PDF scans of all those field observations if you would like to see them. But we do have documentation of waterfowl at the lake.
Is there any scientific evidence based on not just your work here in our lake, but the other lakes you've treated with alum that there has been impacts on waterfowl or is that not been the case?
That has not been the case. I am not aware of any scientific evidence of impacts of alum on waterfowl.
How about impacts on on fish? Or is there a reason why we do or don't stock Wahop Lake anymore?
Well, one, it's very shallow. It loses half its volume temperature. However, there's bass and carp in there. And when we did the treatment in twenty-three, because the water clarified or was cleared, you could see those bass a lot better and the osprey were doing really well and the bass weren't doing so well.
I get it.
So Shannon may have more to add to that.
There have been lots of studies actually documented on the impacts of alum on fish. And it typically, if there is to be an impact on any aquatic life, specifically fish, it is a very acute impact to fisheries, given the improper application of the chemical. Alum, as Mr. McClellan said in his Suburban Times letter, is acidic. And so you have to design your treatment in such a way that you do not impact the pH of the lake. And so we use a chemical called a buffer, which is sodium illuminate. And there's a very tried and true method and ratio of applying those products together that limits the impacts to pH of the water column. So the treatments that I am aware of that have had impacts to fish are due to improper application in those immediate impacts of pH.
In in terms of pH, it's my recollection that Mr. McClellan's current analysis reflected a pH that was higher or currently is higher than expected or anticipated. Is that your understanding as well or no?
That is not my understanding. I have taken a look at the pH data that was collected by the University of Washington in twenty fifteen. And then based on the pH data that we collected prior to the treatments in twenty And then based on the pH data that we collected prior to the treatments in 2020, it does not appear that the pH now is much higher than it had been in the past. I do know that the volunteer lake monitors for the conservation district use different method of measuring pH. We use a, it's called a water quality multi-parameter sond. It's an electronic instrument that we calibrate to pH buffer solutions. And so we could be getting slightly different results as well. Which is one reason why we did not include the citizen-collected pH data in the report.
Is that because the collection method through the electronic instrumentation that you referenced is more accurate or not?
Yes, it has a higher accuracy of point two pH units. And the method that they use, which is a HAWC colorometric method, has an accuracy of point five. And it's based on a color wheel and the, the color that the water turns after they add an indicator.
Based on your review of Mr. McClellan's information recently published in the Suburban Times, is there anything different that you believe Tetra Tech should be doing to more accurately or more up-to-date provide more up-to-date testing or not?
To provide up-to-date testing for
More up-to-date and more accurate testing? Because there's obviously a difference of opinions between the pH levels that are existing.
So maybe I'll help Shannon with that. Shannon, my understanding is Tetra Tech use standard of practice monitoring and testing for Wahop. And even during the alum treatments, the continuous logging of a pH, et cetera, in addition to your staff out there each time. But I'll, I'll leave that to you to elaborate on that.
Thank you, Sean.
Uh, yes. So Tetra Tech, we have standard operating procedures for all of our water quality monitoring activities. So our staff would have used those protocols, which are typically what we use in a variety of different, you know, water quality monitoring projects. And most of those protocol, protocols are similar or, and exceed the state requirements.
Okay, thank you. And I, I appreciate you providing this input, Shannon, just because, as you know, we have gotten called to task over the years, over this entire project at, at some length. And so I just want to make clear for the benefit of the public who may be listening in or sort of evaluating this for themselves, that there has been a lot of thought that's been put into this, and certainly a lot of scientific observation from your company as, as well as from, from city staff. So I just wanted to lay that out there. And then other questions by members of council, Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the very detailed report, Shannon. Couple of questions here. How, how long do you anticipate this lasting? What is, you know, if we forecast like a 10-year, you know, are we going to be out there every, every three or four years, kind of doing small doses? Is that the, the plan or what? Is this going to last for a while? I see in the graph, it looks like the, the phosphorus kind of keeps ticking up. And so what's, what can we expect, I guess, if we look, you know, out to the next 10 years?
Um, I would expect that with Wahop Lake, that you could anticipate having to treat multiple times if that continued to be the city's goal. Unfortunately, given the nature of that system and the historical inputs abuse that that lake went through, there is a enormous pool of phosphorus in those sediments. I think we also don't completely understand the groundwater inputs into that lake. And those dynamics have changed over the past five years that I've been looking at this lake. And so I cannot say with much confidence that you would not be considering another treatment to reduce the phosphorus and reduce the toxic algae.
Is it something that, you know, if we stay on top of, I guess, we could do like the half treatments or some partial treatment rather than is that, like, would that be fairly common for, you know, the ongoing maintenance on this type of a lake?
So that is becoming more common than it has been in the past. There's a lake in Snohomish County that has an alum treatment done every spring in order to control the phosphorus inputs from an old dairy farm. Uh, Lake Ketchum, that lake actually is getting an alum treatment next week. And that has successfully kind of kept the phosphorus levels under control and kept the toxic algae from dominating the system. They are now starting to do that a lot in Minnesota, in the Midwest. These annual to every two to three-year treatments. What we're finding out is the loading of phosphorus to our water bodies is something that we have made worse over time and are now trying to find a solution to a very large problem.
Thank you for that. And then, so, I mean, basically, we have an ongoing maintenance situation, or the other option is like the dredge situation that's an incredibly expensive option. Is that, unless something else comes up? I mean, is that really the, kind of where we're at here, here?
Yeah, there are other products that could be used to inactivate or, you know, sequester phosphorus in a lake. There are also options of algicides to treat a lake to get rid of, you know, an algae bloom at the time. That is not something that I normally have advocated for, because it's just kind of a Band-Aid. But it could be something that the city could, you know, review and look at, given the situation of the lake and the, the just amount of phosphorus that's in those sediments.
Is this like the, sorry, this, I'm, you know, just getting educated here. Is this like the, the most permanent type of, of treatment? Or is there something else that's like a, you know, if we treated it one time, we'd be good for a decade or more?
Um, dredging is probably the most permanent option.
Gotcha.
Alum, aluminum, the aluminum to phosphorus bond is very strong, especially under anoxic conditions and in typical pH conditions in the lake. Iron also binds with phosphorus, but that is what can become easily mobilized. There are products that are made out of lanthanum and the lanthanum to phosphorus bond is also very strong. Those have not been as well studied as alum, but it is an option.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brandstetter.
Yeah, thank you, Shannon, for being here and for the work that you put into both the report today and the work you've put into Wahop Lake over the last seven years. And Wes and I, I appreciate the, the report that, that, that came forward tonight. That is admittedly a, a historical look. It's, it's a look at a, a, at the past and what is done. That, you know, I recall that the matter of, of, of Wahop Lake and that how it impacted the safety of users of Forts Silicon Park was a, an area in my early years, my years on the, on the console, when we were, we were grappled with this for almost two years before we just made it, made a choice about, from amongst the, 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 the solutions, looking forward and and, and, and settled on, on the alum treatment. And I, and, and, and I will acknowledge that when we looked at and defined the problem, we defined the problem, I defined the problem singularly as the toxic algae blooms and the, the constant reports on them from the health department and the science and being able to go and do that. And that there were, and that that was a a, a matter of public concern for both people and pets. And so I was glad to endorse a solution that was going to address toxic algae blooms in the state, in the lake. And I think as the report that we've heard tonight is, if that's the stated goal, then we were successful. That, but I will also acknowledge that defining the goal that what we wanted that narrowly without having a reciprocal goal around the, the recreational value of the lake to many, which to, was never going to be swimming or, or, or doing that, but, but, but it was passively visual and, and, and that, and that, that the lake today is does not have as vibrant activities of fishing or of, if, or of being able to observe wildlife that's there. And I guess that, so, so while I don't regret what we've done, I think that the comments we heard and public comment today from Mr. Faust from Clover Park Technical College is right that it isn't a question of us deciding, should we continue to treat it with alum or not? It, it, it's more a question of we, we really do need to redefine our council goal. Okay. And if our council goal is to bring back some of the ecological health of the area around the lake and in the lake, along with the public health values of not wanting toxic algae, that, that, that we should discuss some things about how to do that. And we should take into consideration something that occurred post our decision to move forward with an alum treatment, which was the work that Pierce College did in discovering that they might have had a role in adding some phosphorus into the lake and the, and the capital project that they undertook to mitigate that to sort of see what would happen if we were to take, take, take a fresh look at options in the, in the, in the current situation, if we went for a number of years without treating it and seeing what it does. Kind of a, a Mount St. Helens solution. As I remember, after Mount St. Helens, there were many people who were sometimes remind me of some of the folks that are talking to us about the, the, what has happened, but they said, it'll be 30 years before you know, Mount St. Helens will remain desolate for, for, for 30 years. And in, in three, there were Mother Nature found a way for things to be coming back to do that. And so I'm perhaps open to Mr. Faust's suggestion that we reformat, what's, what's our real goal for, 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 for a future state there to be able to go into it? Certainly it should include not having toxic algae, but maybe it can include something about doing some things that will help us recreate some of the enjoyment that the wildlife and fishing and others brought to people that, that I see them doing that. I know I still kayak on the lake. I mean, the water's still there, the water's still wet. Okay, you know, my kayak still floats in it to, to be able to go and do that. But, but there are other people, particularly when we opened the lake up with the, the walkway to do that, got a lot of enjoyment from what they could see. Okay. And so I, so I would, I would like to see if there is, are some options that will get us move us in that direction, but not away from it, it being safe from the toxic algae standpoint. Again, what I understand, there's algae in the lake now, but it's not, not the toxic sort. So, 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 so that's, that's not too bad. And I remember when we first discussed the alum treatment and some of the same folks that are telling us we made a mistake were telling us that if you did that and the water cleared up too much, the lake would become choked with weeds from all the sunlight getting down to, 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 to the, to the, because the lake was so shallow and then we get down to that. Well, you know, we hear now that the, the, the bottom of the lake isn't really the type of place where weeds are going to grow to be able to go and do that. So, you know, I, I think we have been successful in our goal up to this point, but I think we should look to try to incorporate something that has to do with, with the recreational enjoyment of the air of the lake in the area around the lake into our goals before we settle firmly on a, on a future series of courses of action to be able to go and do that. And I'm interested in, I, 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 I will, I will also say, though, that I am totally not interested in the, in the dredging option. Not just for costs, but from the, the evaluation of the people that indicated that people would lose access to the lake for probably up to three years. While that was ongoing and, and, and dredge materials had to be stored someplace within the park and being able to go and do that, to do that, you know, so I'm, I'm not looking to do that. But, but I, you know, I, I, I am looking for the, 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 the ospreys and, 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 and in other words, to be coming back. And if, if Mr. Odd is right, we've contributed to the decline in the bass population because we made the water clearer. I mean, that, that's yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how, how we address that. But, but there is, again, I think we need to address this like from a multiple outcomes goal. You know, we, we had a staff and a contractor that took, we gave them a singular goal and they accomplished that. Okay. And I, I don't, don't have any problem with how they got to it and, 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 and that the results met what we asked for. But maybe we should refine what we're, what we want to ask for.
Thank you, Mr. Brandstetter. And I've got a follow-up question to that, if I may, to Shannon. Are you aware, Shannon, not putting you on the spot because we're not asking you to do a whole new study tonight in 10 minutes, but are there any other interim measures other than what we've done? And what you've described as the costly opportunity for dredging? Are there any other sort of interim measures that you can just roughly educate us that might achieve what Mr. Brandstetter is referring to?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, you're frozen there just briefly. Yep, there you go. We can hear you.
Hi, um, so I, I think you're asking like, what are other sorts of kind of lake restoration management alternatives?
Just briefly, I know we're not asking to give us a complete study tonight. We're just having a conversation, yeah.
Um, so there's lots of things that lots of different water bodies have done in the past. And I jokingly to Mr. Ott, Mr. Bucic, when he was at the city, said, well, do you have a, a water supply that we could dilute the lake with? You know, and keep the water level up during the summertime? I work on a lake, Moses Lake in Central Washington, where that is its main I work on a lake, Moses Lake in Central Washington, where that is its main restoration method is dilution with Columbia River water, which is low in phosphorus. So that has been done. Aeration is something that folks implement, although I don't think that's applicable to Wahaup, given its shallow depth. There are these new, not new, but floating wetland islands that folks have put into water bodies with mixed success, but it does add some habitat value. There's, you know, shoreline restoration projects. We've talked to Dr. Jim Gao at the University of Washington Tacoma about potentially like, could they do some kind of aquatic plant rehabilitation, kind of planting plants in the lake to see if they could get them to grow? There's a suite of things that you could definitely evaluate and try.
Okay, great. Mr. Laura Sella and then Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to go way back in my time machine. 27 years ago, I took Biology 101 at Pierce College. And we went out there and we took samples of Wahaup Lake and I got to put stuff under a microscope and slide and look at all the critters and stuff that live there. And it was, it was an experience. But it's been a long time since I took biology, so bear with me. The alum treatment, right? So we add stuff to the lake. It bonds with the phosphorus. Does it bond with the phosphorus that's in the sediment or just in the water column?
Both.
Okay. And then it precipitates out to the bottom of the lake and eventually gets absorbed in the sediment.
Yes.
And conceivably, when the volume of the lake goes down in the summertime, things get more concentrated and the pH deviation from neutral goes farther away, right? It gets more concentrated one way or the other, depending on whether it's acidic or alkaline.
I'm not sure how much the lake volume change impacts pH. pH is mostly going to be driven by photosynthesis of the algae in the water column. And when there are algae, they, when they photosynthesize, they raise the pH. And then when they respire at night, they lower the pH.
Right. It's the free hydrogen in the system.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. And related to that, people have talked about hydrogen sulfide gas. Is that a side effect of the treatment or is that just a result of the the poor treatment of a legacy of dumping stuff in a lake over 80 years?
Yeah. So hydrogen sulfide exists in lake sediments. That's a fairly common thing because most lake sediments are very organic and noxic, meaning they lack oxygen. And so you get a buildup of hydrogen sulfide. You'll often, if you are collecting sediment or collecting a water sample from the deeper parts of the lake and you bring it up, it will often smell, have that rotten egg smell. I think at Wahaup, I think the hydrogen sulfide was there prior to the alum treatments, given the just kind of organic goo of the sediments, given the nature of those sediments, I believe the hydrogen sulfide was there. The Department of Ecology did require the city to collect samples for total sulfides. And we did see actually a decline in total sulfides in the water, in the water of the lake following the 2023 treatment.
Okay, that's interesting. The anecdotal thing, the story that I heard is when we first treated the lake, the water got clear and we found a car that had been in there for a long time that nobody had any idea was in the lake. So, yeah. Interesting, interesting stuff.
Was that at Wahaup or Wapato? I know that happened at Wapato.
Maybe my stories got mixed up. Maybe it was Wapato. Yeah, I'd heard that they found all sorts of treasures, so.
Yeah.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on page 561, I want to revisit this pH thing and I'm not a scientist, so I'm just, but I think I can read dot plots or whatever you have here on page 561 of your packet. And there's American Lake, annual pH, Gravely Lake, annual pH, Lake Louise, annual pH, and Wahaup, annual pH. You also have a pH at shallow and pH at deep. And it seems as though, when I look at the shallow, because Wahaup's only shallow, doesn't meet, there's no part of Wahaup that meets your definition of deep. It seems like Wahaup jumps around more kind of late summer, early fall, we get these spikes. Now you go back to 2017 where it spiked over eight, 2018 where it spiked almost to nine, 2019 where it looks like it was most closer to October where it spiked to nine. It seems to just have more variation, more standard deviation, I guess. What do you think's causing that? And but I will note that the average pH, that seems like the baseline of Wahaup's pretty much the baseline that we get at Lake Louise. It's actually lower than the shallow areas of Gravely. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, I believe that these charts, and I found the page, these are included in the Pierce Conservation District's annual report.
Yes.
So this is data collected by the volunteer monitors for the conservation district.
Okay.
But yes, I believe that you are, you're reading that correctly. And my guess would be that those spikes that occur in the late summer or early fall are driven by algae. And those, if I were to guess, those spikes were probably indicative of a bloom of some kind.
And then you're saying, so thank you for pointing out that it was Conservation District. You're saying that your numbers on average come in a little bit lower than theirs.
I have not directly compared the pH values that they have collected at Wahaup to the ones that we have collected.
Okay.
I just, I don't think that they should be compared, given the difference in method.
Okay.
One thing I will say though, is between like this plot on this page 561, if they're using the same method for all five years, then those should be comparable within each other.
Thank you. So I want to move on to the penultimate question as to what this this lake can become. So you mentioned Moses Lake, which I think is a much larger lake, right? I'm seeing Columbia River, which is a much larger river than anything, than Clover Creek. So, I mean, that doesn't thank you for the comparison, but have you ever seen a situation where a municipality has taken a 33 acre pond, seven inches, seven feet average depth and turned it from where you're battling algae blooms to where it is fishable, swingable, swimable and drinkable? And what was the cost of that?
I'm trying to think about the lakes, so Ketchum, Lake Ketchum in Snohomish County is an example of a small lake. Actually, maybe even slightly about the same size as Wahaup, I think. However, it is deeper. So not, but they have been able to completely change that lake's ecological status and trophic state and reverse its complete toxicity to something that is the residents can now use. The other small water bodies that are this shallow that I have dealt with have been mostly stormwater ponds. And so those are not typically the goals of a stormwater pond. I'm working on one right now in Virginia Beach that is pretty similar to Wahaup.
So what Lake Ketchum, how much deeper? And did it have the problems that we have of the sediment?
Yes, it did, but it is about six meters deep, so 30 some feet, so quite a bit deeper. It had incredibly high levels of phosphorus in the sediments from an old dairy farm and incredibly high phosphorus concentrations. And so we did the, a lake management plan similar to the one Brown and Caldwell did for Wahaup Lake, where we looked at the inflows and outflows and we recommended alum to inactivate the sediment. And then that's the one that I mentioned earlier that now does the annual alum treatments every spring.
So who's doing that? Is it Snohomish County or one of the cities?
So it's Snohomish County Surface Water Management. Marissa Bergdoff is their lakes person in charge of that County Lakes Program. They, they are an amazing resource. They have a lot of lakes up there and have had many different kind of restoration alternatives done on different lakes. They've done aeration, they've done alum. So they would be a very good resource.
Shannon, you added Lake Ketchum is figure two of the report on page eight. There's a before and after on Lake Ketchum on that. And then the data you provided me is in 2014, 2015, they did 20 milligram per liter treatments and then their maintenance treatments are three to six a year, three to six milligrams per liter treatments.
And they're mainly doing that with, in the case of Lake Ketchum with alum. But that has another.
That's all alums, correct. No, that's the treatments they've done with alum since 2014 in Lake Ketchum.
Okay. And is there a source of fresh water or is that a kettle or whatever we call it?
No, that one does have a surface flow, surface water inlet. And that actually is part of the problem because that inlet flows through the former dairy farm and so can still continues to contain incredibly high levels of phosphorus.
Okay.
Yeah. So Green Lake is larger than Wahaup and slightly deeper. But it has gone through kind of the gambit of lake restoration alternatives. It's had alum treatments. The city of Seattle used to add drinking water for that dilution impact. They did that for several decades. I believe it's had some shoreline restoration work done on it. So that would be another kind of urban, urban lake and Green Lake gets the stormwater runoff from Aurora and that whole urban neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, again, Mr. Ott and Shannon, thank you so much for spending your time with us tonight. It's very helpful. As you know, it's a, an issue of interest to a lot of folks here in the city. And we just appreciate the update and the report and the opportunity to have a conversation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, those are the items for discussion tonight. And now we turn to Acting City Manager, Ms. Kraus, for any report she may have.
I just have the upcoming events. So on March 26th, we have at Hotel Murano at 11:30 a.m. the Community Healthcare Annual Luncheon Laughter. On March 26th at 6 p.m., we have Mayor's Coffee House at Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. And the topic is West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition. April 12th, between 11 and 3 p.m., we have the Youth Empowerment Summit at Harrison Prep School. April 12th and 13th, between 8 a.m. and 2 p.m., we have the Spring Community Cleanup Event at the Lakewood Transfer Station. Then on April 16th, between 8:30 and 10 a.m., we have the Communities and Schools of Lakewood, which now supports the Clover Park School District and Franklin Pierce Schools fundraising and community breakfast at the McGavick Center. April 18th, between 5 and 9 p.m., Cops versus Teachers Basketball Game at Lakes High School. April 24th at 6 p.m., Lakeview Light and Power Annual Meeting at Lakewood City Hall. April 26th from 9 a.m. to noon, Parks Appreciation Day at the various parks. And that's it through the month of April.
Oh, that's it?
Through the month of April.
Yeah. Enough opportunities to spend money to continue to go to work to raise more money. Any questions for Ms. Kraus? Okay. Well, thank you again for the presentations tonight with staff. We'll turn to Council Comments briefly and we'll start with Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items, Wednesday night, Planning Commission, they're working on a few items I think that we're all aware of. And then Thursday night, Pierce County Regional Council, it looks like a fairly light agenda. So I would hope the meeting will move along fairly quickly. It doesn't look like there's any action items.
Thank you. How about Mr. Brandstetter?
Mr. Mayor, I guess that I would report that I did have a Microsoft Teams meeting with the representative from the consultant that's going to be assisting us with the recruitment for a city manager. And so had a good conversation with her, being able to go and do that. And you know, other than that, I guess I'm looking to have some time off before our next meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to go to the Boy Scout 353 100 Year Celebration. They've been around for quite a while. I got to be there for the 75th year celebration 25 years ago. And that was was interesting to come back to it and to connect with folks that some of them I hadn't seen since that celebration 25 years ago. So they're a great organization and I hope that they continue to build attendance. And they're successful due to the participation of parents. So getting folks involved with building young men and women into the leaders of tomorrow is really important. So I enjoyed that. It was nice seeing both mayor and deputy mayor there as well. So thank you for coming out. This week, on Wednesday, I'll be at the South Sound 911 meeting. And then on Friday, I'll be at the Pierce County Climate Conversation Meeting, representing the city. And then next week, there's the Coffee House with the mayor on Wednesday. I'm going to try and join you for that. And then that Saturday, we get to have our retreat and all get together here. So that'll be, that'll be enjoyable too. And then the Wednesday, the week after that, I'll be at the Public Safety Advisory Committee. And yeah, we have three weeks before we sit here for another council meeting.
Very good.
Time off. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for my tardiness today. I was thinking I had all the time in the world.
Yeah, me too.
Last week I went to the the Tillicum Neighborhood Association meeting and there was a pretty good turnout there. Bryn came and gave a presentation about the Lakewood 301 app and how to use it. And it was very informational. I think a lot of folks appreciated it. I certainly did. There was there was, can't remember who else was there um, giving a presentation, but uh, the the presentation. Oh, yeah, yeah, the code enforcement officer. Um, it it was a very good cu- uh, presentation and kind of, you know, they they tag teamed off of, you know, how to, you know, uh, submit code enforcement issues and what to do and how they get processed. And um, it was, it was really informational. So that was a, that was a good presentation, I thought. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to thank our First Responders Week and how we acknowledge them. Um, and their overall wellness and health is very important. So I really appreciate that that acknowledgement went out. And then this week, I met with the consultants, also um, actually today with fellow council member and deputy mayor. Um, and we were able to discuss some of the qualities that we're looking for for the city managers. That was very helpful. And this Saturday, I will be attending the Beloved Community in Action Workshop at Fort Silicon. So I am looking forward on reporting back on that and how that workshop goes. Look, really looking forward to continuing the conversation there.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I did uh attend the um Boy Scout Fifty Three and it was good to see Councilmember LaRcella in action and to talk about his past uh participation. It was awesome. Um, it's good to look back sometimes, isn't it? Yeah. Um, today I participated in the uh information search for a new city manager, and I think we had some good questions uh that were, would help to make a good decision for the election. Uh, the gala, I was, it's a huge success. I, we don't have the final counts on the dessert dash, but it's above last year.
Great.
So that was good. It was a lot of sickness. Uh, so it was a lot of empty seats in.
You're saying before the dessert dash, there was a lot of sickness?
Afterwards, they were sleeping, no. But uh, it was a a great evening. Everybody enjoyed it, had a lot of fun. So thank all of you for that, supported me in that, so good job on that one. And then Saturday, I am attended the Comma African, uh, African American History Event. I said nine o'clock, and hopefully I can make it to the beloved's community. I'm not sure on that. Uh, Thursday, I will be doing, doing the Springbrook Neighborhood Association Meeting.
Fantastic, great.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Very good. Well, uh, just wanna comment on the city manager search process. Councilmember Pearson and I had our uh stint with the um, the principal with GMP, and she, and we discussed our own thoughts, and so it's good to hear that you're all doing the same. Um, I have asked uh, city manager to have Mr. Vargas kind of prepare a letter for me to, I'll pass by you first, but just to generally outline process for purposes of putting in the Suburban Times to tell the public what we're doing, what the process is, and how they can look forward to being part of it with regard to uh, the event that we plan to have at the McGavick Center and the possibility of some citizen panels yet to be determined by us. But at least is it going to be some public engagement in this process? So I'll pass that around before we do anything, just to get your blessing on that. But I think it's important for the public to kind of know that it's not going to just be us, you know, in a closed-door session. It's really going to have uh some public vibrancy to it. Uh, and then speaking of that, if you would put on your calendar tentatively May twenty seven, which is the day after the holiday. We don't have a a meeting typically on the fourth Monday, and that is a fourth Monday, as I recall, one, two, three, four. So Tuesday, the twenty seventh, would normally be the next council meeting date if we did a fourth Monday. Uh, but that may be something we set aside to do a special meeting for the benefit of thanking Mr. Caulfield for his service here and having a larger event here in City Hall. So just kind of a a warning order on that to put it on your calendar a little bit. Some more to follow on that. Um, I thought about doing something maybe on the second of June, which would be the first meeting in June before his retirement kicks off on the fifth, but that's just, it it crams it together too much, I think. Yep. To do something meaningful for him. Other than that, uh, I did attend the Boy Scout True Fifty Three Centennial Celebration. It was fabulous. Uh, what was even more amazing was that Councilmember Laura Sella could still recite the Scout Oath by memory. So the deputy mayor and I were working on our own merit badge for him, but uh, we'll have to present that at another time. Yeah. There are a lot of events coming up as a city manager indicated, so we look forward to all those. The other one I just want to point out is the Lakewood Rotary Event on the twelfth of April. It's the same day as the youth summit, but obviously it's in the evening. Uh, it again is raising money this time for Nourish here in Lakewood. They are working to enhance their facility. That's where they bought the old Mattress Ranch place with some investment monies that we provided from the ARPA funds. And they've um produced a schematic drawing that looks fantastic. It'll be an amazing facility for the benefit of Lakewood residents. So if you want to help uh with that endeavor to provide additional funds to nourish, it's April twelfth, I think, starts at six. And that's what I have. Other than, I'll do the coffee with the mayor apparently next week. And then Mr. Bokey and I have the PCRC event this week. Unless there's anything else, any alibis, Mr. Branstadder?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in my uh discussions with Ms. Terry uh, of that, she mentioned that she was hoping to finalize a draft of this, a job description to be done. Um, and then she wanted.
A profile, you mean? Job description profile?
Job description profile they use in in advertising, and that she was going to ensure it with with us and with some staff. And then then she was looking to get a a consensus on a final document. And she said she was hoping to get that in this month. Then I pointed out to her that we are not going to meet until April seventh to be able to get to a point of doing a consensus unless you get us together for a special meeting to to consider that. Um, sh- she didn't uh necessarily say, oh, that's terrible.
Yeah, I'm sure she wouldn't, right.
But 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 she's, she's, she sounded surprised because she had a timeline in mind that 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 had us approving such a thing uh in in March to be able to go forward. So as you have some discussions with her, if you find a need to get us together to look at something, because I told her, getting it to us is no problem and we can all look at it. But for us to get together to share thoughts on it and come up with a consensus, the first reasonable opportunity is going to be on April seventh.
Excellent point. And Councilmember Bell just uh nudged me to recall that we do have our retreat on Saturday, the twenty ninth. And I believe Ms. Perry was planning to perhaps attend that. I asked her if she had time, and initially she said she did, but I don't know if that's still on her radar. But that may be an opportunity. I know we've got a stacked agenda for the retreat, but if we could maybe ask her if she's willing to carve out fifteen or twenty minutes for that?
So um, my issue is not one of whether your agenda's packed. We have all day on Saturday, but um, I want to make sure that the communication flows properly to your acting manager or manager so that we may properly notice that meeting.
Absolutely.
Because it's not a regular meeting, you can only deal with topics that have been properly noticed to the public.
Right, so we would want to make sure we do that in advance, give you at least five days or so. Right, so I will touch base with her to make sure that that works with her timeline. Uh, otherwise, we could have a special meeting, say, either on Monday, the twenty fourth, for a very brief period with this being the sole item, or on the thirty first. So either the twenty ninth, twenty.
And I, and I don't know whether the twenty fourth is 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 on the other end of the timeline of being able to get it to all of us.
Might be too soon, yeah. Okay, I will check with her and I'll certainly work through Ms. Kraus or Mr. Vargas uh, and uh, see if we can do that, because I think it sounds like she's talked to all of us. And she's working with the executive staff and the the directors, is that right, Ms. Kraus? She's working on those interviews? Okay, great. Okay, very good. So more to follow. Thank you, Mr. Branstadder. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Bell, that sounds good, likely on the twenty ninth, but I'll check with Ms. Perry. Anything else?